Okay, we'll call a study, study session in order at four thirty. So I'm kind of.
Awesome. Is there anything you need to do?
No, I think we'll probably do the, we'll call and we'll do the question, so we'll call.
White, absent, um, Anderson, Anderson.
There.
Ohio.
There.
Lassie.
There.
Lassie.
There.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get back to the first name basis because it's been a while, okay? If you guys want to introduce yourselves, that'd be great to us.
Perfect. My name is Chris Amiel with Volley Engineering. Uh, I work in the client development portion of it for onboarding and working clients through uh, everything from planning stages to uh, brand uh, security.
My name is Barbara Marx and I am with the architecture and I'm the person who helps people through building projects.
Awesome. Um, so well, thanks for having us back. Uh, what, uh, just to recap some, some we're hearing, how this council and such, but uh, um, what our goal is at Volley Engineering was to explain to you kind of some of the services that we offer. And one of the things that we do on the front side is we do a needs assessment. We come looking facilities and uh, infrastructure and stuff with the city. Uh, and then we provide our assessment of that and some funding opportunities and, and how you could move forward with uh, accomplishing some goals as you see fit. So tonight, what our goal is to give kind of a report of the things that we inspected, um, some of the things that we looked at and um, provide you with a pathway if you see fit as a council to engage the Volley Engineering to help you solve some of those things. Um, so uh, that, that's our goal tonight. Um, but as we go through this, you know, nothing's ever perfect here. If there's something that we either have wrong or missed or anything like that, we, we welcome, please stop us in our tracks. We definitely will want to address it. Barbara will be taking some notes as we go through our presentation and adding them right to it as we go. And then we can provide that feedback as well.
I'm just gonna make a, give a little reminder to the audience that this guy stuff destroyed us tonight. That this is a study session, so there won't be any, any, any back and forth or any questions or stuff to be asked by the council only. Okay, we don't want to have an interaction with our constituents tonight. If they'll be able to do that at council meetings or in the future of any questions they might have, so. And that'll just keep the focus right there.
Awesome. And, and we don't need any, you know, we're not looking for any decisions you made. This isn't information, uh, you know, back and forth with, with us in the council. Absolutely. We take our direction from the councils. Thank you. Appreciate that. So yeah, with that, I think we'll jump into it. We just got a, a agenda where we'll talk about, um, you know, hello process here for introduction. Uh, we'll go through the infrastructure and civil engineering side of stuff that we've looked at. Uh, the architectural side and then we'll have an inclusion. And like I said, we, I, I have a task order that I'll, I'll present to you as a council tonight for your consideration at an upcoming meeting. And uh, we can talk through it and um, make any changes to it or anything to be, you know, sent back to us. But um, that will be, you know, kind of our, our, our conclusion to it. So, okay. Well, with that, we'll go into the civil engineering side of it. Uh, we, go ahead. Um, so we looked through your water main system, your existing. Uh, a couple of things, uh, it's mostly nineteen fifties cast iron. Uh, it's in good shape. You haven't had issues with it. We don't have any immediate repairs. We have a cautionary statement that's something that we just want to bring to the city's attention. And, and that actually will, will go with the streets and your uh, your sanitary collection as well. Um, uh, I would ask you, can you go to the next one? Sorry. Uh, the next one is your uh, collection system for your sanitary. That's also nineteen fifties and that's clay. What we'll tell you about your system is um, there's no perfect way to tell you when your system's gonna fail. What we can tell you is the serviceable life of your system. The estimated serviceable life of both systems is eight years from where you're at right now. So you're at that seventy, uh, four year. That doesn't mean that in six years, your system's gonna start failing. But what we give as a cautionary statement to the city is that you should start looking at planning for your eventual replacement of your system. Um, we, we can give you an estimate and we can tell you that uh, from a fundings standpoint, they look at eighty years as being that serviceable life of your system. But you have to have inciting events to access that funding. Meaning you have to have water main breaks, televising footage, showing problems in your clay system. And we just don't have those things happening now. But in the future, and, and when you're talking about future planning, and that's one of the things that we always help our cities with. You may want to look at starting to have a target date of, um, there will be portions of your project, no matter what. If you decide to replace any of that infrastructure in the future, that will be city contribution or something that is ineligible cost and things like that. So um, and if you flip to the next slide, a lot of times what you want to do is if you start planning that, you want to plan that with any of your street projects. So uh, one of the things that we do, and that wasn't anything the council tasked us with or asked us to present anything for uh, street reconstructions or replacing the infrastructure. We just want to put that, that, that bug in here from a planning standpoint. If that's something you want to do, that's something we definitely can help you with. Something that you should be considering in upcoming years so that you can pair any infrastructure replacement with street reconstruction or replacement. And the reason is, is especially from a grant standpoint, when you replace the infrastructure underneath the street. So if you start having some issues in the next ten, twelve years and you want to look at an infrastructure replacement, there will be some city costs to that. So you may want to start earmarking for that. That's, that's your business. That's a city. We can provide you with recommendations. We can tell you what we see as grant opportunities. So you can, we can help you determine what might be a city portion of that. Um, but those are all forecasting things that we're happy to do for you. But we strongly recommend that you coincide that with any street replacement because if you apply grant funding to any infrastructure replacement, i.e. uh, street, uh, your water mains in your streets or your sewer, it pays for the reconstruction of the street above it. So it would be good planning from your engineering side and from your city planning side to coincide any street replacement with that because that could become grant eligible. If you do street reconstruction outside of any infrastructure replacements, it's not grant eligible. And you wouldn't want to like reconstruct the street and then five years later come back and put infrastructure in it. So that's where, why we talk about that is, it's a good idea to sit down and do a plan phasing approach to that. Um, with a full understanding of where your, um, where your infrastructure currently is at. Yes, sir.
Uh, one of the questions is, we have televised a lot of the sewer lines in town. The PUC has done that. Uh, we, we did an elm project where we ripped everything out and put the infrastructure in and found out why they ripped it out. It would have been cheaper to line than stuff instead of what we did. It costs us a lot of money after, and like I say, once we got in there. Is that something, you know, that, that we would look at because when we televised, and I don't know, I don't also the PUC, I don't think we did the whole town, but we did the areas that we thought maybe was our, our problem areas. And we have put some lining into some of those areas and it's been working great.
So lining is a good solution if you're, if you have structural integrity and, and truthfully, your televised footage that we see into where, you know, that we talked about, uh, and from our, we haven't sat down and reviewed it because we didn't get a copy, a copy of it. We were, um, we're totally, we're quite happy with uh, the structural integrity of that. But this time, um, we're just telling you that it has a serviceable life. And you're nearing the end of the anticipated service of life. But what, what can cause differences in that is your soil makeup, how it was installed, you know, there, there's so many things that could vary as to why you could get ninety years or a hundred years out of that thing. And you could maybe get a hundred and twenty years out of it with lining or things like that. The only thing that tells us exactly what the serviceable condition of your pipe is, is televised footage. Because it's the only view you can get of it. Besides digging it up out of the ground, the problem is if you go to dig it up to look at it, well then you might as well put a new piece in it. And so televising is an excellent way to do it. And what our recommendation is to your community is to look at getting all of your system televised and then have an evaluation. Televising is expensive and I don't want to just say, oh, you know, I, I'm not just trying to haphazardly spend your money on your behalf. I think that you should look, look at what makes sense to you for televising. Knowing that if you really want to have a rock solid plan for moving forward, all of your footage of your televising can help you evaluate whether something should be what we call trench cut, um, dug up and replaced or long. And, and, and that's also a determination of how much does it cost to line it? Are you doing any street repairs above it? Because if you line it, you don't get any line for street repairs above it. So there, so there's a lot of factors to take into consideration on that. And the only absolutes we can work at is televised to understand what it is. Because to just say that your system is nineteen fifties clay nearing the end of its serviceable life is not a big trick. We actually have to have, we have to prove it to the public to see what it is. And by, by televising it and understanding it, we may find that it's, it's worth lining it. And maybe your streets only need a, a mill and overlay or something like that. And so that's where it comes to having a full plan of not only where your water system is at, uh, but your, uh, your, your wastewater collection system is at, but your streets are at as well. And, and putting all that into one capital improvements plan moving forward so that you can fully understand that. And it might be a variety of lining and replacement or all lining or all replacing. It's different in different cities. But the only way that we can ask, give you an absolute on it is with televisions footage. And we're happy to review that footage and, and, and work through that and provide you with a recommended plan moving forward. And I can't tell you what that plan is without, without doing it. I, I hate to say that. It's, um, I don't, I don't want to just say, well, you, you just gotta decide to move forward with this to do it. But truthfully, unless you have televised footage, all I can tell you is that based on estimations, you have six years left to your serviceable life. I don't believe that to be true. I actually think that you have more serviceable life left and I think that you could put more in. But I don't have any evidence to give that to you without the televisions.
So the lining sounds like sort of like a preventive maintenance thing, something you do to try to, you know, extend the life of your system. Is there, is there, is, is, is the funding available for that type of decision?
There is. And, but what I'll tell you about lining is I, in, in, um, a lot, the people who do lining might tell you one thing, but engineers will tell you another. And it, and it's very uniform from engineers, from even one company to another, but they'll tell you about it. Lining provides minimal structural integrity. It, it, obviously you're putting another layer in it. There's, you know, there's some structural integrity in that. But lining is typically used to combat I and I issues. Because um, if you have a catch basin or a mampel cover or, I'm sorry, a mampel structure or anything like that, whatever that structural integrity, they, lining that provides very little structural integrity to that. Some, because you're putting a inner layer fiberglass with reinforced with a, you know, composite material and, and so you add some. But if that's a crumbling structure in any way, shape or form, it will not replace the structural integrity that needed to be there for that to retain.
One other question. And so, let's say that you're, you know, you're looking at uh, having a street redone or something, you know, like we, we tried to do every couple of years or whether there's another project, trying to stay ahead of that and, and, and keeping up on the streets. If there's, if, if it hasn't shown a breach in the integrity or a problem with the system down there, did I hear you say you, you're probably on your lawn of funding that?
No, at that point, it would be a city's decision of whether you wanted to line it or whether you wanted to replace it. Because I and I dictates uh, that, that there's an issue and something needs to be fixed. If you find I and I in there, meaning, and that could be something where a joint has slipped. Uh, that could be something where you've got root intrusion, you've got water coming into your system. That is, you know, when you look at a sanitary system, it should be a sealed system that is only delivering water that you sold and used and through the user out to your, your wastewater treatment. If you've got, if your numbers are skewed at all and you've got I and I issues, then that becomes a, a point where the city gets to make the decision on it. No funding agency will force you to line it. Because lining is a, is, and it, it is a temporary solution. It can only add soak because that clay pipe will eventually deteriorate over time. So you don't get, if you line it, you don't get another eighty years out of it.
So, so I guess what I'm trying to say is if you, if the next street that we do, we decide, you know, let's, we're here, it's, it's eighty years old, let's, let's, let's do this now. They're responding, they're responding for the infrastructure? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Even if there's not issues with the infrastructure, it's just the road that they want to fix. So even if there's not issues with the infrastructure for sure, will there be funding? I think is what you're asking.
Stand alone for the road only, there's very little funding. And I would tell you that there's not.
I get that, I get that.
For just robbery.
It was basically, the question was basically, if there's nothing wrong with that, but you decide to replace it because it's like expectancy is getting there and it's the next street you're going to, to fix, is there funding for that if there's no record of it having a problem?
Uh, there is some.
Okay, it's just less.
It's just less. Yeah. See, it's a less desirable, um, because there are communities that have crumbling uh, clay pipes. That would be a higher priority of the funding. So there again, that's why the televising footage tells us truthfully, everything you can get better.
So if you have an option of maybe three streets that you're gonna do, you want to televise and see which one might have some problems? And, and your chances of having more help getting that done.
Do you have a rough idea of how much, like percentage wise, what you, and rough is funny, of what you have televised? Do you think you have twenty-five, fifteen?
Three quarter.
Three quarter. So that, that.
All, all of the newer construction, we started with the oldest part of town and then we went forward. We got three quarters of it done. We had a lot of problems with Glenn, um, his street.
Their physical.
And we had a lot of leakage and we did go ahead and uh, we lined that. And now, um, even with all of that rain we got this spring, we had very, very little influence that's going through the sewer plant.
In that, right.
We're sitting good.
Yeah.
The public utilities is on top of all of this. They get with the street department and they go to the roads. We pull up the video and we know what we're doing.
I, our engineers feel that your clay pipe has a lot of serviceable influence to it. But we have no way to tell you what it is without reviewing the televisions.
Can I make a weird analogy?
Yeah.
So let's just say that you have an old house and you have on the south side, all of your wood is starting to rot because it's had wind, it's had rain, it's had sun. And you paint the whole house. And the east side, everything looks the same. On the east side, the wood is good. On the south side, your wood is still bad underneath. So lining is kind of like that. You, your finish is good. You have integrity. It's buying you time. It's a good solution in some situations. It's not the solution in every situation. And so your team will help you discover and decide which solution matters the most and which is the most cost effective for you.
What we don't want you to do, or what we would advise you not to do, is to do a full reconstruct of a street above infrastructure that wasn't fully renovated. That, that's, that's our condition. Um, now your water lines, a similar situation is you've got uh, nineteen fifties cast iron in your ground. That is near, it's anticipated. And I see anticipated because in one city, it might fail at sixty years. Another, it might fail at a hundred and twenty. So they, they come up with an average. And the average is, you guys are, you know, that, uh, within that six year mark. But you aren't having major water main breaks. So your soil condition is probably not what we call hot soil that's deteriorating your pipe at a, at a, what maybe would be a normal rate. There are ideal soil conditions for that pipe to be in. And you likely have that soil condition because we're not being told the exact. However, the only way that you can really determine is, there's two ways to determine what condition your water pipe is in. One, if you're having major water main breaks. If you're having a bunch of those, you document upon them now. You tell the funding agencies, we're having trouble. The water mains are breaking here, here and here. And that's justification for replacement of them. The second is to pick spots throughout town and you pick certain areas where it's not going to disturb as much and, and dig down and actually investigate that. Make sure that it's in good condition, uh, things like that. And that, um, that's something that you can do if you want. Um, you can also just say, we know it's good and we don't want to do any investigative efforts. And that's where um, our, our advice to you is to determine what you're comfortable with, with the information you have. And if you would like assistance in determining anything further than just what you know now, we can put together a plan, help you build a CIP for replacement of, you know, because everything breaks down over time. We can help you determine what would be a good plan so you can start preparing yourself for it. When I talk about preparing yourself for it, that could be you allocating money for your portion of the project. Or that it could be you pre-planning and determining, okay, we're gonna look at doing these two blocks in this year. We want to apply for funding on it. Because when it comes to funding, you want to have a, a solid plan moving forward of what you're gonna ask for because they're giving away that money years in advance. So if you wait until you need it, it's too late. Um, not that there is an emergency funding and not there, that there's not things that you can get through. But if you plan for it, if you get in their cycles and can increase positive results for you. We don't have enough information to advise you right now on what you should do. Some of that is either your competence level in your infrastructure or further investigative work to say, okay, this street should, this street needs to be replaced in this year with a mill and overlay or, or just, or, or seal coating or whatever. But the infrastructure's bad enough underneath it, you shouldn't change it out. Again, our engineers and, and through evaluation of the information that we have, we aren't seeing any problems with your system right now. So that invest, any further investigative effort, in our opinion, would be for future planning.
Can I throw one thing that you guys are clearly all aware of, that you have a very unique situation of being a planned community? Where your infrastructure's all the same age. And the community that I lived in, some of the pipes were from eighteen ninety. Some of them were from nineteen thirty, some were from nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy. You know, you, you don't have that situation. So being proactive in your planning probably is, it would be of great benefit to you guys.
And you know, that, that's something that we can take. If you want us to investigate that or anything, we can put something together for you and explain what it would take to do that. Um, a couple of scenarios that we did not know was how much televising you had, what your appetite is to complete your televising. Uh, we didn't have the full length of what CIPP projects were, uh, your lining projects. Uh, uh, but what we're being told is that you do not have I and I issues or any significant level of them. So that is not a trigger to replace your clay pipe. Age is not a trigger to replace your clay pipe. The only thing that is a trigger to replace your clay pipe for your wastewater collection is if we're finding something in the televised footage. Which we'd be happy to review on your behalf and we're happy to report that.
Keep that in consideration.
I, you know, if I was in your shoes, I, my former job was city administrator. And if I was here to advise you or if I was sitting in your shoes, I would say, okay, our infrastructure's all the same age. It's not failing right now, but I don't want to get into a situation where it's completely failing. I finish your investigation of your, your, I would finish the televising, whatever piece you're comfortable with, whether it's you do it all next year or you do it over the next five years, whatever, whatever your.
Everything revolves around the dollar.
It does.
You know, whether we're PUC or we're city, everything revolves around the tax dollar and the amount that we collect for public utilities. And that's what we can go forward with.
And, and you've got seventy-five percent televised. Most communities I go to don't have it. So you have a plan moving forward for televising and understanding your system. Um, are you, have you had an engineer review your televising footage before?
S E H has.
Okay. Was there any advisement on replacement or levels of good shape? And then, and this, the CIPP piece that you had, or the lining that you had done was based on I and I issues specific to that location.
Yeah, that, that street was, was causing.
Honestly, my recommendation is, I, if I had to guess, and it's a, this is Crystal Ball, so you're looking at probably, you know, you know, like maybe in like five to ten years, you should be reviewing this and saying, and taking another look at it or, you know, understanding your televising footage. If you start to get water main breaks or something like that, the only thing that I, I think should instigate you to either doing a full plan or spot plans, meaning just certain areas in your community, is your streets right now. Your streets, in my opinion, would be driving the investigation of any utilities underneath it because of the grant opportunities you could get for that street restoration. What it is, is they restore the street above it to light income. If it's an asphalt, uh, you know, uh, city street now, that's what will, that's what the grant funding will replace for a trench, uh, cut design. If you do lining, you lose that ability to do that. Now, I'm not, I'm still a proponent of lining in certain scenarios. Lining, um, if you just put simple numbers together, if you have clay pipe and it's, that's structural integrity, but you have I and I issues, that doesn't mean that resets your eighty year life, but it may be twenty to thirty years out of it. And truthfully, that, that's enough in most cases because you could do your street repair above it, save the money in putting up what the city side of that would be and uh, and, and just move forward with just doing the street above it and the lining that's underneath it. Because lining is still eligible for grants. There's a cost or a reason for lining. So it, you know, um, I think you have to pick as a council what you're, what you're comfortable with, what your, what your level of comfort is in your underground infrastructure right now. And I don't need to just put that on you as a decision. And if you want assistance in evaluating that, we stand ready to help you with that. But at this time, we, we just, we don't have any, we, we don't have any reason to advise you to replace anything. It just doesn't make sense at this time.
Thank you.
So.
Seems we're doing a good job.
You are. And you know what? Um, one thing I want to show, and it's probably hard to see, but we have multiple colors on this for street conditions. And that's a positive thing. Many, many cities that we work in have, and we're looking at A, B, C, and D as your street conditions. And a, a C and D street doesn't mean that it's a failing street. It just means it's got some maintenance things that are upcoming. And um, the fact that you have, and I apologize that, that's probably a little hard to see, but I'll just tell you that you've got, um, you know, you've got probably forty percent red, which would be a D and C type street and probably thirty to, you know, thirty some percent in there. And it's just balance out between there. Well, what that shows you is that you've got a plan and that you're actually working through your streets. I know that you rely on your streets director to, um, you know, to coordinate a lot of that with seal coating and stuff like that. And when you do that, you're extending the life of your street. It's expensive to mill and overlay or do a full depth reclamation. And so the longer you can get out of your streets is the better. At some point, regardless of what it is, seal coating and, and uh, you know, crack sealing and seal coating will no longer, you know, keep the integrity of that street. They'll start alligator tracking. We need to get to the point where we're gonna have to start doing some uh, reclamation or uh, uh, you know, milling overlays. Uh, again, that's something where we can take your street, we can tell, we can advise you and say, we recommend that this street be replaced in twenty twenty and this one in twenty twenty. You can put a plan together. But our recommendation is if you want a full street assessment like that, you should incorporate the utilities in with it because the utilities factor into funding for those streets. Either yes or no. And then that's an important decision to know in deciding when to do it is, okay, this street, uh, you're gonna need to replace utilities in this section at some point, assuming that there's a condition or a reason to do that. Well, you wouldn't want to pay that street in twenty twenty-eight if you're gonna replace utilities. Well, you wouldn't want to pay that street in twenty twenty-eight if you're going to replace utilities in twenty thirty. You don't want to wait the two years and use that funding to, to direct that. And the only way you can do that is, and understand that fully, you know, is with a capital improvements plan that, that investigated all three of those items simultaneously. Okay, um, a couple of issues that, uh, we were asked to look at is your storm, uh, your drainage and your stormwater sewer issues, uh, elevation study, uh, based on some flooding that occurred and some bonding issues and stuff that you've had. Um, we, I do have a task order later that I'll explain, um, what our recommendation is, but looking forward to, uh, to correct those situations. There are actually some minor corrections that could occur in it. Um, but it needs to be, um, for lack of better words, designed out so that it, that's, that it's correct. Because all corrections to any kind of flooding or drainage have downstream effects. And you don't want to create a new problem by fixing one problem dislocated. You may have, I, I don't know, you may have corrected some of this or not, and I haven't heard that you have or anything.
You talked in West End, Nevada here.
Um, that, that, and then by the campground, there were, that, that entrance right there, by the campground.
This is the campground, yeah. And that's by the golf course, I believe.
Yep, that's the road by the golf course, so. And then you have that, uh, nineteen fifty-three drainage dish project, that's represented in that lower left with the red line on there. Um, and I apologize, I thought we were going to put this on a big screen, so I, I should have made these pictures bigger, but, um. Basically, um, pretty minimal, we would, we recommend, uh, some design work so that you get a permanent solution for that. If that's not something you want to do and you want to come up with your own solutions on it, we're more than happy to step aside when you do it. But we're, we want to offer services to, and when, when you do engineering and it's relatively inexpensive to do that, believe it or not. But there, there's the, when you design something in engineering, there's some liability to that. So, so we do have to, um, provide you with the design, you have to charge a little bit for it, have an engineer actually sit down. We have to do some, uh, surveying and marks on it and such. Where this issue by the campground, you may just tell Public Works to put the whole, those bill in and see if that solves the problem. And, um, the, that, that really depends how, how you want to approach that problem. The golf course, uh, I believe that issue's a little bit more, takes a little bit more work than just put some bill in it and such. So that one, we recommend, uh, designing solution.
I think that, isn't that, uh, upon the middle of town?
I think that's Fountain Hill, in the middle of town.
Oh, that might be a bad picture then. Yeah, that is, actually, so. But anyway, we, the golf course, what it was, was we had some bonding issues.
The, the sets did a really good job ditching out there and, uh, done quite a bit of work that takes since you guys have been here.
Yeah, and I, again, happy to step aside and just say, if it becomes an issue again, uh, you know, again, I have something on that, uh, task order that we'll talk about at the end here. Uh, happy to design a solution, happy to wait for you to try and solve it on your own as well, you know, it's. Sometimes a bucket of dirt can accomplish, uh, accomplish a lot. Not everything has to be engineered, but we're not a work for engineering, so. Okay, uh, next slide. So your West Babbitt development, um, so we, we talked a lot internally, we reached out to multiple sources, uh, um, some of the funding, uh, agencies that we work with and talked through some of this. Um, we realized that you have some money that's allocated to it already from, um, some stuff that you've applied for. And, um, where we feel you're at and you've had success with these in the past is there is, um, and I'll, I'll read it off as I actually have it as worded. Evaluate the concept that you currently have, come up with some, for lack of better words, permanency of how you want it developed out. And then, uh, provide cost estimate for it so that you can apply for funding, for additional funding to complete it. And, um, and put together a funding strategy for it. That's a service that we've done in multiple communities for similar issues like this. And for lack of better words, the simple way that I can explain that is, that's what drives your project. That's what takes it from, um, a conceptual drawing, something that, um, that, that you're working through and pushes it to the finish line and gets the additional funding that's needed for it, the final design, you know, all those things that it takes to get this where there's a road there and house to be built or businesses moving in or, you know, whatever the community decides that they want. Um, and that's something that I have, uh, on this task order as well. So, um, there are multiple funding sources that we've been used for these in the past and happy to list some of them, although if you're, if you're curious for it at all, there's, uh, you know, there's state and federal sources, congressionally directed spending requests, um, depending on what kind of, uh, if you want to bring in either housing or economic development, you can use either D funds or HUD funds, there's multiple. We've got about seventeen to twenty different agencies that we go to for various needs in communities. Uh, some of them are in the same agency with different programs underneath it, which is where it happened, they talk about it that way. But it's about, the advice that I would have for your community on this and what we can provide you with, uh, what our recommendation is, is you have to come up with some finale. There are, you can get some funding and things like that, but you have to have this final, um, plotted, ready to go design that you're laying out in front of the funding agencies and saying, we're doing this, this is happening this way, this is how much it's going to cost. And you have to work, for lack of better words, in a world of absolutes to access the additional money that you need to drive this over the finish line. Some of that money can be grants, some of it can be loans, it just depends on, on how much you want to do. It can be phased out, that's, that's part of what we've helped some communities do in the past where you do portions of it. But you understand the full concept of it so that, that you're not, you're not undersizing something or making something incorrectly or having an endpoint where it shouldn't be, so that you understand that, you know, the full finish line goal so that you can, we can implement phasing. And a lot of times phasing is dependent on two things. It's the, um, the necessary of the development, meaning how many homes or businesses you want to push into that area. Uh, it can also be based on the funds that have headed to the funding agencies to, we've actually had funding agencies that have come back and mandated phasing for certain things because they say, well, we've got this much money that we can help you with this year, but we're not going to have any more until this year. So that creates a, a, a phasing necessity. And then some of it is just, uh, city investment, how much are you willing to put into it? Because if you're only, you know, if you have a certain budget that you want to work in, that should be a comment for phasing operation. And, and again, and I don't mean to just angle something and say I've got this task order, but I've got a task order at the end where I'll, I'll talk about what it would take to do that, how much it would cost and what, what the results of that would be. Um, this is our preliminary funding analysis for your community and I'm happy to say that you guys meet every, every requirement that we have for all our funding agencies. There is not one up here that you are not eligible for. Um, and fortunately you will not need an income survey for any small cities development funds that you would go after. If you choose to go down that path. Your median household income meets the rate for small cities development programs, um, which is, which is good. Um, you are eligible for, uh, R and D funding, you're eligible for P F A. Um, you do qualify for small cities, as I mentioned, you do not need an income survey. You're eligible for legislative, uh, for the L C C M R funds, and that's a Minnesota resource. Uh, local roadway improvement funds. And then, uh, the bottom one, I triple R, you guys are eligible for, but yours is a little bit of a unique situation because of the county that you fall in. They run it through the county if you do, if you've accessed it before. And, and it's, it's a little bit of a unique program and the numbers are a little bit different down there. But, um, not, not any, it, it's a little bit less than the statewide program, uh, because of the way that they issue it out. But it's just important to know that upfront. Sometimes when you look at the funding mechanisms and, and how you put things together, when you're taking multiple funding sources and interlacing them together, you're looking at, you need to know what one is capable of doing so that you know what to ask the other. A no-on-one can actually be a positive for another because if, if you're not eligible for one source, that might make you a better for the other. Or having a limited amount, which your, um, your I triple R access is, is, is lower than, than other communities in I triple R region, based on the county you're in. But because of that, small city, or I'm sorry, um, you know, U S B A Road Development or some of these other programs, we can use that written in the narrative to access you more funds on that. So e- even limitations can be good if you use them correctly in your narrative, so it doesn't, it doesn't limit you. Um, any questions on, on programs that you're eligible to, uh, to access for your funding? Okay, um, with that, I think Barbara will talk a little bit about some architectural stuff that we reviewed.
Sure. Okay, so one of the things on the architectural end is that, that we don't really have a defined, we need exactly this. So one of the things that we kind of looked at is what is our why? You know, why are we doing things? What, what's triggering, triggering some of these conversations? So we were, we have other facilities in the community that, that do have needs. I mean, we talked about the arena and different things, but we were asked to really kind of focus in on the municipal center and the fire hall. Um, so when we look at this building, what we learned is there are some existing ongoing H V A C issues, heating, ventilation and air conditioning. Um, we have some abatement that could be done here, you still have some hazardous materials in the building. Um, we've been told it's a quite expensive building to maintain. Um, some areas are underutilized and then the restrooms are not a, I think there's one fully compliant restroom in the building, but that's not even open to the public at large. Um, the fire hall itself, probably the biggest, I mean, it's a well-kept building, your, your fire department looks like they're doing a great job. But one of the biggest challenges that I personally have seen in fire halls is that so many of these buildings built in the fifties and sixties just do not accommodate trucks today. And a lot of people are finding that there are special ordering trucks to make them low enough to fit in their building or not, um, ordering as long of a truck as they would normally want. Um, I think you're stacking vehicles a couple deep in at least two bays, I think. Um, so that, that's an issue too, and that can affect response time. And response time is a big deal on a fire. Um, workflow impedes that, that can be an issue. Spaces are really tight, I don't know anybody, any of you if you've walked in there, but there are places where you are literally doing this to get around. And that, and that can be an issue in a crisis. And that's something that has to be considered. But overall, the building itself is in really good shape. It's just that it's kind of like a kid outgrowing their clothes. And, um, you know, what do you do to accommodate that? And then the next thing on the where is our why is, you know, that West, West Babbitt development, what do we want to do with that? Is there, is there something we can do that can help trigger other growth? Just thoughts on that. So what we did, because there is no defined project, we sat down and we really tried to think, okay, how can we, how can we think about this in a way that allows you guys to explore ideas, even though you don't, we don't know what the project is? So how do we compare projects that we don't know? So one of the things that we looked at was, and you'll see this as we go, we've got essentially three different concepts going. Concept A is the idea of you would work on the fire hall independently and this building independently. Uh, concept B is essentially working on this building and moving the fire hall over. And concept C would be is if you went everything out into the West Babbitt development. So we'll just kind of explore those a little bit further. And again, so you see here, A would be work in two locations. B would be work in one location and C would be entirely go over here. So in concept A, we really kind of took, and these are all high-level concepts. And one of the things that I want to point out is, yes, we've had conversations, but this is not full design. So a lot of this is based on, um, uh, Tony, I believe, gave me a plan that you guys have been looking at for if we're doing things in a perfect world, you know, it'd be something like this. And so we kind of used that as a point of departure. It's, it's not a final decision. I, I want to be very clear that everything you're seeing is not a final decision. But it's applying the same set of rules to, to option A, to option B, to option C. So that we can kind of look at things and somewhat evaluate them, see what makes sense for you, or at least to give you thoughts on how to really explore those ideas. So concept A, um, would be the idea of remodeling some of what, or remodeling what's there and then putting in addition on, whether it's a drive-through, whether it's a backup into the, into the bays. That's something that would be determined in a design phase. Um, and then people would be able to, uh, basically quickly hit the, is it North Street?
Yes.
Yeah, North Drive, thank you. Um, in, in, it's an established pattern, you know, there, there's benefits to being there. Um, but there, there's work that has to be done. But one of the things that I want to point out is that thinking about those target areas of that thing we were, that, those imaginary rules we were laying on, this, this site is constrained and we can't get the, the area that we wanted. So on the municipal center, this idea is when we walk through, you can really see that the north wing is really underutilized. So in this issue, it's, it's making it more than just cold storage. It's the idea that it would be renovated, H V A C would be taken care of. Um, there'd be some work at the gym and then getting some A D A compliant restrooms. So that's kind of what, it, it's a little bit of work there, a little bit of work here. And again, these are big picture concepts. Um, concept B, this is the one where the fire hall would come here. So if you see that white part, that's the idea that the north, the north wing could come down. And then you could have a, essentially a public safety wing added on. And you could get government services in one location. Um, and it could be co-located with the police department. Um, in this scenario, you could do renovations and updates to the gym. And that gym could be a, a, a place for emergency services if something had to happen here and you need to have a command center. Um, you could get the I T in there and do things like that. And then it would be adding vehicle bays. In this scenario, especially if the building, the north wing came down, you would have a pretty easy option of drive-through bays. Which depending on, you know, who you talk to, most, most fire departments I talk to like the idea of drive-through bays. Concept C is the idea of taking your public administration building and being an anchor on that West Babbitt development. It's moving everything out there. Um, it would be a combined, combined safe, combined building for all of that. Um, you'd be relocating most of the services that are in this building. And then it would be assuming that you have to have a prepared infrastructure. So when we look at some numbers and that's, that's kind of where we're coming to here, I want you to see this. And I, the first thing I want to point out is this big red knot. And what I want to point out is that these, remember I said it's an imaginary set of rules placed over each location? So there are numbers here, we're not saying that that's the project that you're doing. We're saying that if you apply the same rules to all three locations, concept A comes out at a certain point, concept C. So A is the two buildings, concept C is a new building. In, in the theory with the rules we're applying, they're roughly the same cost project. Moving over here is slightly less, but I will also point out that that does have, um, there's a missing number and that's abatement and hazardous material. I and we are not qualified or authorized to make comments on hazardous materials. You've heard that speech before. Um, but, but that has to be something that would be thought of, that there would be some abatement in there. So it's really kind of trying to show you that, that the different options, you may or may not have had your own assumptions on which one was going to be the more expensive. But we can help you analyze your information moving forward so that you can continue to make decisions that are informed and based on statistics and history and past experience.
Would you read out the cost estimates on all three columns?
Sure, now remember.
See this.
Yeah, and I want you to remember though, that the numbers are, are, it's, it's taking the exact same square footage and applying it to the different plans. So the renovation cost on concept A, there's over five million in renovation. And I'm just giving big round numbers, is that okay?
No.
Um, there's a little over a million in new construction. There's not a ton in site work and then that last column is contingency. I'm going to tell you, when you do work, you should never go into any project without a contingency. We all want to tell you that the estimate's great and we're perfect and we can do it, but that is, that would not be responsible. And so we want to make sure that we set you up to succeed. and that we planned that that might happen and it's a bonus if we don't use it at the end. In the concept B, we're talking about 1.8 million in renovation, probably 2.7 in new construction. There's more site work, that's, that would be coming over here. And then again, you still have that contingency. Concept C, it's, it's almost six million in new construction, absolutely no renovation. And then it has a lot more site work because it's an undeveloped site. And then again, the contingency. I want to be clear that these numbers aren't, your building's going to cost this much. It's with the rules that we applied, that's the comparison.
So what is the small print on concept A that you would be doing?
Over here?
Building that would cost $5 million, or you know, estimated that probably.
Could you say that one more time, please?
Yeah, so A you said would be around five million.
Yeah.
With the plan A, I'm asking what, what kind of work will constitute spending? What, what, what's doing what?
So it would be on the fire hall, it would be remodeling essentially eighty percent of the building. And in addition, over here, if I recall correctly, it was, and because I'm going from memory right now, it was about twenty seven percent of the building had high renovation and seventy percent had really light renovation. So to just kind of give you those factors, does that make sense or not? And when I say heavy versus light, I mean, um, you have to take all the ceiling tile down, change some, something in the heating system and you put the ceiling tile back up, that's light renovation. But if we're knocking down the walls and moving things.
So is there detail that come up with those factors?
Yes, but again, remember, we, we haven't even talked to you in detail on what a plan for change would be. That's why I keep saying over and over that these numbers aren't actually real, they're comparisons.
They're based off of square footage.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we don't, what, and the reason why we provide these upfront like this is because you haven't made decisions of what you're going to do. But we don't want you to do a bunch of speculative stuff out on the front side or three different paths.
Right.
Because that can, that can cost a lot of money by the time you break that down and you, and, and get into that. This is to help you maybe hone down to at least two options, maybe even one option. And then you can determine if you want to get that cost estimate, refine all the way down. And that's where, when she's talking about working in these imaginary what-if scenarios, that has to be further defined by what does the council want? How, wait, you know, is there square footage changes? Is there building orientation changes? When you talk about, uh, the $5 million in the fire hall and renovation here, you know, that's pretty significant over at the fire hall because to turn that into, uh, a lot of the, you, when you open up a building and you start working into it, you open yourself up to maybe new regulations that your grandfather did before, ADA requirements. With the fire service, you've got an MPA requirement now. And so the, these things get very expensive. And to be honest with you, to know and understand this is why people, depending on the age and what it takes to do your building, that's why sometimes it's cheaper to build new sometimes because of what it costs actually to build. And sometimes it's cheaper to renovate what you have. It just, we can't further define that
Right.
without actually having a full, you know, sit down and planning discussion with the council. And that's where we move from working in this, um, I don't want to call it imaginary because that's a negative term, but this assumption category to working in a world of absolutes. But we don't want you to, sorry, one last thing, I'll say it. We don't want you to have to pay the money, so to speak, to make all three of them an absolutes.
Right.
We wanted to provide you with an understanding. Think of this more as like a range. It's to renovate both buildings is roughly the same amount as building.
Think about it like they're both a hundred percent and concept B might be eighty percent. That might be another way to look at it.
I have two questions. How much abatement is there in this building?
Well, so again, we can't, we can't determine that. You have to bring an expert in for that. And, uh, it, it just depends. But there, there's definitely some abatement known that exists. Probably some asbestos lining.
Boiler room definitely has asbestos lining in it.
And then my other question is, there's definitely funding for fire halls and emergency services. Is there the same amount of funding for renovating as there is for buying, uh, building?
To be honest, our most successful funding to date, there, there's two pathways that are successful for funding municipal buildings. And, and you can, you can do it any way you want to do it. But the two that are most successful are new with, um, with life safety, you know, fire ambulance, things like that add to it. Because that's a very, that's got a lot of funding triggers to it. Or if your building's on national registry. Those are the two paths that we see the most funding following into. The national registry one, it, you know, historical is very complicated and takes a lot of effort. And sometimes you end up putting so many speculative costs on the front side of it that it might not be worth the grant. No, we can help evaluate that and determine it, but I also don't think this building is.
It also has implications on what you can and what you cannot do. So that's something to always remember when you're looking at.
But it's also my understanding that, that new, that did, emergency services are heavily funded, like a good portion of the project is funded?
I would be cautious to say heavily funded.
Okay.
Where we've had success in that is going to, you know, federal grant sources like UGRC spending, things like that. We have to, you know, narratives have to be written to magnify your need and things like that to it. Why you need a new building, life safety. You know, when you think of a community and its needs and what are fundable, life safety is the number one thing. Water is, water is important and the, but ironically, water isn't as important as sewer because sewer has downstream effects. So it's like that your sewer needs can actually be more important. But now when we go to life safety for, you know, first response and things like that, fire ambulance, things like that, that's another one. Your current building is very expensive to bring up to NFPA standards. And that is, there, there's so many things that you're building, you, you're grandfathered in with the building you have now. But, um, and I don't know if you've run across this, but many cities have. You go to buy a new fire truck and it doesn't fit, you, you can't get a used one because it doesn't fit your building. So now you're forced to buy a new one so that you can stack it on size.
I think they already did a custom build one.
And they're usually about a hundred thousand more.
And, and that might be something you want to do now, anyway. But when you get into, let's say a used market truck, and I'll just say a truck that's five years old from a, you know, large metro department that has huge tax base and you get rid of them. A, a smaller one will have a higher value. It could, it could do the same job and such, but it'll have a much higher value and cost you much more money because of the competitive that every other fire department in Minnesota wants to buy that truck because it fits in their fire hall. So when you build, when you look at refurbishing or doing any expansion or anything like that to the fire hall, one of the key things is to make sure that your upper assets is fit. Because when that fire hall was built, was that, I'm sorry, you said it was a fifty?
Fifty-seven, I think.
The trucks were very small and there was plenty of room in there. They, even just from the seventies to the eighties and nineties, the trucks got. The other thing is, is when you, when you fully renovate or use grant funds or anything like that for any kind of renovation of those buildings, you, you fall victim, I, I would almost call it victim, to some standards that you currently don't have to. And that can be things from rooms, uh, in fire services groups that are required for your gear to be stored at and cleaned. You know, meeting rooms have to be different, you know, there's so many.
Utility rooms.
After that, yeah.
You came up with these, these things here, were you aware that City of Babbitt owns the property to the west of the fire hall? So we have room to put another, we have room to put another stall that would fit any size fire truck? We could, we could either put another building, like a metal building, sheet in it or slab it like you just did, they bought a ladder truck to do it back. They have a hundred year old fire hall. Instead of doing all this renovation, everything, they built a, you know, forty thousand dollars.
And that's.
Parked it in there. I'm just asking you, were you aware?
No.
That the property, all the way from there to Loski Building Center belongs to the City of Babbitt? That we have a lot of room for expansion?
We knew you had the garage right next door.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, you completely moved.
What I would say though is that's similar to concept B then. And, and maybe, you know, because if you're using part of that building that's there now, you could reduce some of concept B, but if you, if you add it on to the fire hall in place, that's very similar as to adding on here. You could just reduce some of that construction cost in the building that you're, you're interested in.
So I'm going to just throw in like, let, let's say you chose to go forward with something. The very, very first stage of the next phase of work is helping you define the scope. So even though we gave you the, this information, this could be twice as big as you need. We don't know that yet. And, and so in, whoops, in that, in the pre-design. That could be bad. Um, and I'm just in the chat while he's trying to figure it out. So in a pre-design phase of work, it's really where you take time to meet with the end users, meet with the elected officials, figure out what the needs are, what the wants are. They aren't always the same thing. And try to come to a consensus on what has to be done. A lot of times, um, we start with the pre-design and we go all the way and we figure out exactly what people want. And then you look at the actual cost estimate associated with it. And it could be, hey, we can't afford that, so what makes sense? Well, then at that point, it might be what's our priority? And then you take those priorities and you take, you take all that information and you work to define what a real project should be. And you work together as a group. It's not just us, it's not just you. You're bringing your knowledge here, we're bringing our knowledge and expertise of every project we've ever done and our knowledge of codes and regulations, bringing it all together. We try to get you a project that works best for you.
You know, there's, um, when, when you talk about these costs, they're huge.
Yeah.
And we, we absolutely recognize that. There are some things, especially when you go after grant funds, that you also, I guess we're all victims to what you do. One, one of the things in Minnesota is E3 standards, that means any construction may convert them for them. When you accept a grant, you might be required to do, to bring all of your HVAC to a E3 standard, which is something that's, you know, handed down by the.
Yeah, I'll throw it in if you guys have heard of LEED. It, it's kind of almost like that. It's, it's, it's meeting environmental standards and, and you, it's, all your lighting is LED. You switch things over, your HVAC might have automated systems so that there's less energy waste. It's all about energy.
An example that I can give you, and this is why sometimes, you know, this is what the information you have to have to weigh versus new versus renovation, is that, uh, there was a library that received a grant and they wanted to redo that basement area that wasn't redone. The city received a grant, wanted to redo their basement in it. There was a little line in that grant that said must be E3 standards. So in exploration of finding that E3 standards, it required three times what the grant was in mechanical engineering to put new HVAC in that building. And so the grant was really pointless because they were actually digging themselves holes and trying to dig their foundations themselves. Now, one of the things that we help with is exploring what are your options, which are not factored into here at all in both grants? And, you know, what are your options, how can you pivot? But you can pop for exemption on E3. And then the project was, was something you could do. But we can't tell you that we can do that unless
More information.
Unless we know all the information, what you want to do and what your grand state goal is. And the problem is, is you're in a very entry level planning stage in this and you don't, you don't have absolutes to give to anyone, to give you numbers.
Which is again, why you have such a basic comparison here? Because that's, that's what we got from you guys was a, in a dream world, this is what we would have. And so you have to, we, we find that it's easier for you guys to make decisions if we give you something to look at.
It's a conversation.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And, and your, I like your choice of word on conversation because it's not telling, it's conversation. And we're going to learn from each other and we're going to work together and find the solution that works best for you guys.
And these are perfect models, accounting for all contingencies that could happen.
Yeah.
Like a plug and play thing.
Yeah.
Which doesn't work in every community. And they are always going to be bad there to the right side. Because the one thing we don't want to do is get you down the path of thinking of price. And then all of a sudden, you get that money and you're ready to go. And then it comes time to bid that out, you're short. Because that didn't do anybody anything. Then your plan could be wasted.
Yeah, the, the real idea behind this was to get you guys to think of, so what are our options? And it's remodeling what you have, adding on to something you have or building new. And it's just trying to get you to think outside of the box and see the different factors apply. I, I want to switch to the next slide because I think this is.
Just one piece of information. And I'm trying to think, I know our original, original fire hall was in the old library building was like where the bait store is up there. The original fire hall was, uh, right in the parking lot of Municipal Liquor Store.
Okay.
So the fire hall that you guys are looking at.
Yeah.
It probably, I think, was it a fire hall back in the seventies right there? Does anybody remember? But, because I remember my dad was the general in the eighties and that was an IRRV project. And that thing was completely renovated.
Yeah, there's, there's a plaque on it. And there was a renovation after that.
Yeah.
So, so what you're saying, that checks out.
And a lot of the brick and stuff, that was all done.
Yep, that makes total sense. Yep, it's a good building. And so, you know, that, that's definitely a factor, which leads me into like the next slide. And this is one, when you're talking about cost, there's the, the price you pay on day one, but then there's the big cost. It's what is the cost over time? So these are some of the things I want you to think about is you have that initial expense, which is like I said, the check you write on day one. But there's also value and risk. So in that, I'm going to say, um, how do you apply a value? And, and this is where we would need to like do studies and conversations with you guys. But I'm, I'm making a broad assumption with what I'm saying, so I could be wrong. I'm assuming that there is a value to the fire department being on North Drive because it's a quick onto a major road and going elsewhere. How do you put a value on four minutes faster? Two minutes faster, one minute faster? To, to some people, that doesn't mean anything in the world. When it's your house that's burning, it means everything. So there are things like that that are, how, how do you apply that concern? That doesn't come from us, that comes from all, all of us. And that's a decision that has to be fleshed out as a group. So that's, that's your value and risk. Salvage costs, on the flip side, that's a good building. Would somebody want to buy it? So, you know, if, if you're abandoning a good building versus a not so great building, you know, what's the value on that? What's the payback? What's, what's the positive, what's the negative? And I'm not answering these necessarily, I'm just telling you what I think you should be considering, maintenance. One of the things that, that I've seen in different projects is somebody might have a system that is, you know, great for a couple of years, but maybe I knew, I had a project that I worked on that the elevator can only be maintained out of Texas. So every time they had a problem with the elevator, it was about a $2,000 bill because the maintenance guy came from Texas. So those are some of the things, you know, again, that you want to think. And then operation, the cost of keeping the lights on. I mean, what's, what are your lights, what's your HVAC, some of those things, is your building insulated? I mean, that's one of the cheapest things you can do to efficiently run your home, your business, is insulated. And some buildings are insulated really well and some aren't. So those are just examples of lifecycle cost. But you would want to take the cost of building, apply some of these principles and then think about it as a group and make a decision how you want to move forward from there. That's, that's my, that's my skit.
So, um, one of the things we, we wanted to do was talk to you about, we don't want to make any assumptions on anything, but we want to talk about the things that we looked at. How would you move forward if you would like? And one is, um, if, and I can say this if, because all of our staff believes that although you should come up with a plan for your underground utilities and your street replacement and, and get a scraw solid CIP moving forward, we don't think that's an emergency situation. We don't think you have failing infrastructure that you need to start applying for today. We do feel that it's a future need and planning for the future would be very smart and we stand ready to help you. If you would like us to do that, we, we absolutely would be willing. We understand through talking about the waste art treatment and log treatment. We understand through talking about the wastewater treatment and water treatment plans that, that you have an engineer that you'd like to remain working on those, happy to abide with that. And so, our thought is, is if you want us to help you with that moving forward, you can name us as your underground utility engineer and we could help you develop that plan moving forward. Our other recommended next step is, I do have a task order here that has breakdown of three different items. They can be edited if they don't meet what your, what your thoughts are on them, but... And I'll just kinda review them a little bit, but there's three things on here is, and I'll, I'll bring it down to column A, or I'm sorry, column two, A. Evaluate, one of the things that we talked about was a West Babbitt addition. And how do you, how do you drive that project? How do you get that to start happening? And, and we have had success with these projects before and we've worked with cities that are at their exact stage right now. And the way that you get this project moving forward, and in our opinion, and what we've had success with, is to, to evaluate the concept that you have. And what I mean by that is, make sure that, you know, this is a layout here, but that's not a design. You need a, you need a full design of, of all of that. So we had to evaluate that and make sure that's the path that, that you wanna go down, that it matches your goals still to me. We wanna provide a cost estimate for that, meaning put together with the actual cost. You can't ask for assistance above any levels. You know, there, there are some things where you can ask for assistance in planning and things like that. I know that you've gotten some. But some of the funding agencies that we work with on stuff like that, they work in a world of absolutes. Meaning they wanna know, we're doing this, this is how many lots there are, this is what it costs to do it. So we have to provide that cost estimate and then develop a funding strategy. And what that is, you know, in, in simple terms is, we actually come back to you with, once we have all these three steps done, our deliverable to you is, we evaluated, we understood what you wanted, we provided you with the cost estimate and we know how much this is gonna cost, with some contingencies in it for protection for the city. And then where can you go to access the remaining balance or the shortfall that you have to accomplish this now? Now, the monies that you have now, you could do a certain section of this. You could get this thing moving forward and start, you know, I, I can't tell you how long this stuff could be, but you could stub into that with utilities. You could, you could build some of that road out and start accessing some of the lots. But you want to have, in this, what, what we recommend is having a full plan for that. Because we find that what happens a lot of times is, you start, you get going down the path and it just never gets finalized. You guys have a great plan here, you have a great location, you have everything you need. Our opinion is, you need someone to help you drive this. And this is, this is what we would recommend and what we would provide for you to drive this project. Your deliverable, again, would be that, a cost estimate and a funding analysis, or I'm sorry, a funding strategy. Meaning, we would like you to apply for this grant. We recommend you apply for this grant. We recommend that you do X, Y, Z to accomplish this. And that's with the full determination of the current funding climate, because that does change. It's political, just like anything else. So it, it has ebbs and flows to it, you know, both federally and state. So, we'll work through that. B is, and I realize by the way that there's no decisions made here tonight. I just wanted to review this with you while we're here in case you have any decisions. And I'd be happy to leave this. It's not a one, one or nothing. You could cross off anything that you wanted. You could tell us to change it or take some work out of it. We just needed something to start this process. But the other thing that we, staff had reached out to us on was an elevation study in your stormwater conveyance system. And what that includes is measured on a manhole survey and structure evaluation. So that your system can be evaluated, not that it's failing, but it has some problems. You know, you have some issues that, that you brought to our attention. And this, this is the evaluation of your system to determine what's causing that to happen. And that report, that deliverable brings you back to, okay, this is what the problem is. This is how you fix it. And with that, we can also provide funding solutions to go get that money to fix it. But what you can't do is just say, we have a problem. No, no agency will give you any grant dollars or loan dollars or whatever you, whatever meets your budget to fix this without fully understanding what it is. For, for lack of better words, to put it very simply, they're like, yeah, we believe that you have a problem, but prove it. That's where televising, like they said in, in your wastewater system, they, they want you to prove it. The third thing on here is, we talked about the campground and the golf course. Provide design details for campground, golf course, erosion solutions for the city to solicit quotes for construction improvements. We don't think that this needs to turn into some big design help project. We think that there are very simple solutions that can be applied to this. However, to accomplish that, we would have to do some surveying and we'd have to have a bureau here to, to do some evaluation and stuff. And then we would provide you with the documents that you could use to have a local contractor do those repairs. We don't wanna make them out of a mold bill. We just think that evaluating the problem, coming up with a solution at a minimal cost to the city and have a local contractor fix it, in, in our opinion, is the most economical way to fix those solutions. Now, I, I, I stated when we were going through that, if you threw a load of dirt down something and it's holding, we don't have to do this. If the dirt moves again and you're continuing to have that problem, then maybe we should look at this. And so I think that's up to you to evaluate what makes sense for you moving forward. And if you want just one of the items out of here, if you like, don't wanna do the campground, but you want us to evaluate the golf course, I just need that back tonight.
Just a question on B here. From the Catholic Church, you know where that is. Your engineers went in there and they, you're saying the evaluation study would be $15,000 to figure out why it's flooding over there?
We would do the whole town, because there's downstream effects. So we would evaluate your entire stormwater system. I, if you wanted us to do just a portion, I can come back to you with the total for that. I, we don't recommend it and a lot of times, we still have to shoot all the elevations and go through everything and model the system anyway.
So if we just wanted just a part of it, the people that live on the streets over there, from, you know, where the Fulton Hills, Fulton Hill Park, everything west of there, what's flooding, especially this spring? I mean, Jim, you, you know what it was? It was your house or it was your house? They all flooded out. And we asked that you, engineering would take a look at it and see what needs to be done over that way. And you're saying to do a study?
I'm saying that you, to properly do it, okay...
But you wanna do the whole town?
Well, that's because there's downstream effects. There's always, you know, water isn't just the water that's in that area. Water is an impermeable surface. Parking lots can be, even a gravel parking lot can be an impermeable surface that moves water. We're talking about looking at all of the water, the stormwater conveyance for the entire city and, and evaluating the solution.
And everything on this side of town goes into Fulton Hill Park. And then on the other side of the road is where everybody flooded.
Okay. And happy to, and maybe that's something that the communication back there would... When we look at, you know, a certain area of the community that has a stormwater issue, evaluation of that, in, in our opinion, requires evaluation of the entire system.
So what you're saying is, if you create, if you fix one problem, you might create another if you haven't gone through the whole system?
Correct.
Thank you.
And if you want us to do just a standalone system, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I'm just gonna tell you. I'm sure our attorneys are gonna write something in there that we're not responsible for, you know, X, Y, and Z. And I'm not saying that, that's not a threatening thing or anything like that, I just...
I understand.
It's hard for us because as engineers, you have liability to the work you design.
But did you take a look at the Embarrass River or any of them lakes where the beaver dams are? It's, you know, all of that.
It's all of the surrounding area, so we use top graphical and survey data to figure out what water commands. I'll give you an example, down in like southwest Minnesota, we run into this. And we sometimes will have to work miles away from town because farmland has drain tile in it that's moving water. So it's not just, it's not just, it's not just the devil you know, sometimes it's, it's further and...
I think that's kind of our, we all kind of agree, that's kind of our situation here. Our problems are further out, further out of town. They are, they're a mile away, you know.
Called Beaver.
Yeah.
Don't you have any trouble anymore? You know, when I was a kid, I used to blow up beaver dams. The DNR gave us to blow up beaver dams. And I couldn't buy the stuff we used to use to blow them up. Every blacklist for the FBI, you know. It's just...
So on A, evaluate concept of West Babbitt development, provide cost estimate and develop funding, the cost estimate that you're providing is for...
Sewer water streets.
Okay. Provide cost estimate for that and, and funding strategy. That fund, I guess that's the part that I kinda had a question with, the funding strategy. I mean, so you come up with, you know, you should apply here, you should apply there. Does that, does that service follow the project to its entirety?
Yes. No, there, there's additional things that would have to happen that allows you to finalize your plan and apply for grants. So I'll, I'll try to simplify it a little. We talked about providing a cost estimate, that cost estimate is a preliminary process. There, once you do final design, that can change. What we don't wanna do is have final design now because it's expensive. That's the expensive part of the engineering and it's why you haven't done it up to this point. Likely why, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make assumptions here, but because it costs a lot of money. And until you have an anchor client and there is somebody pushing that through, you don't wanna do that. You save some, and this is one thing I would tell you, if you're gonna have someone do this initial push for you, you want, you typically wanna use the engineer that you're gonna use down the road for it as well. Doesn't require you to, but there are some services that they do on the front side. And you may or may not know in the engineering world, engineers cannot use another engineer's work. So there is some work we would do on the front side to come up with those preliminaries that we would not have to charge you for on the second side. It's not a huge amount because this, even this whole study isn't a giant proponent. But it's, it's, it's a cost savings to an extent. But when you talk about designing something out, that actual engineering designing, and that's where you start looking at layout, elevations and everything, and basically building build sheets for the installation of it, that's the expensive side of engineering. And if you do that on the front side, that's huge city cost that you may not get reimbursed for, you may not be able to get grants for.
Aren't we already to that point with SGH? Are, are we...
They're done.
Yes, you have an initial, initial planning system.
Okay.
So this, you know, this part, but we may receive any cost estimates or anything.
Well, I, I think we've been told that it's gonna cost us $4 million, but the infrastructure, right?
I, without actually doing the work, I can't, I can't...
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's where we are with them. We went, we went to the state of Minnesota and asked, and you know, asked for half of that and rewarded it. And that was based off of what we had learned from this other engineer.
Yeah. And, and that might have been a hypo estimate, it may have been an actual, if you had a breakdown, we did not receive this breakdown.
Okay.
We don't, so we don't, our assumption is that doesn't exist.
Okay. Who in their right mind is gonna build any pump, think bad until you fix the water issue? You're, you're pissing up a hole right now. You better get one thing fixed first, but then work from there. Why are you even looking at that? No one in their right mind is gonna put a $600,000 hole in that pump in that area. We got an issue on the west side of town that should be addressed immediately. It has to be addressed immediately. Because whenever you're getting this break, when the water, when the snow melts, we're gonna have flooding basements again. And you have all those people flooding, so why are you wasting your time on this? Fix the problem we have first and then go from there. And by the way, this fire department, you've got 600 houses in this town. You start spending $6 million, each house is gonna get taxed $100,000. That's part of the responsibility of that fire hall. You're better off giving a person $100,000 every time a house is flooded or something. This water issue needs to be addressed immediately.
I just wanna say, remember that that estimate was just a, based on a set of parameters so that we can look at things in comparative. No, I just wanna make sure that that's clear. And that's exactly what I'm saying. It doesn't mean that it has to be that.
But I, I'm worried about, I think that project there is, is done until you fix the water issue because no one's gonna spend $600,000, and that's the average house price right now. Build a home in the west end of town and find out that their basements or their houses are flooded. Fix the water issue first, then go back and then work your, your development, which I'm totally for. But we need to fix that water immediately. This season, we have a lot of them answered. The next step is attorneys, because the city's not doing anything about it and it has to be done by this winter. And that's what I have to take on, and it's still my job.
The problem we have is where the water problem is, is not belongs to the city that...
You want to get, you want to get the city...
Excuse me, I'm talking, I'm talking.
All right.
We, we have been in contact now with the Corps of Engineers, St. Louis County Water Department, St. Louis County. Those are the people that that land belongs to. This is the beginning of the Embarrass River is back here and that starts there.
Water's not coming in from the back, the river is coming in from the front of the houses and the... Jimmy, this is the conversation you have to have. I understand the frustration and I thought that we were having, I thought that we're having SGH come to look at this, were we not? Because wasn't that the last conversation?
We have not contacted them. We have contacted, we have what I just got done, so we'll take a look at it.
So we, we had, we had an engineer in town during rain that, that year. And we have some assumptions of where some of the stuff is. But assumptions are, are just something that I'll get. We won't even share that information because we could be 100% wrong once we started investigating. And you just, the, the only proper way for us to be able to provide you with an evaluation of it is to come in, look at all the upstream effects, downstream effects, shoot, you know, shoot points, understand your full stormwater system with elevation points and stuff like that. And it's just the only way that it can be done properly. And I, I know you, you talked about a lot of the city is in good shape and not problematic. I don't know, I, I can't answer the question, if we could do just a portion of it without doing all of it? I, I can tell you that, that I, I would have to ask that question because, now being an engineer myself, I don't have that answer.
I would, Jim, I just want a result. I want that problem taken care of.
And this, I think the important thing out of this is, this would provide you with the answer of what's causing it so you can go get the funding to remedy. That, that, that's the key. And right now, y'all know there's a problem, we, you know, even our team has pictures of, of the problems that occurred. You know, from the, from the disaster that was declared and there were some, you know, other problems that happened. But it has to be proven to the, to the funding entities to be able to get. And whether you use, I, I'm not, I, you know, I obviously hope you work with us, but you will need someone in engineering service to come in and evaluate it to access money from other programs. It, it, it's just, it's just the way that they work in the world of proving it, so. I apologize. I don't, I don't wanna get anybody amped up on anything. We're, we're literally, we, we look at everything. So I don't want, I, you know, we're not scared to pitch you to do anything and absolutely, you know, go down a path that you don't want to. But we said we'd look at everything and we wanna look at everything and...
Can't let your eyes crush you, except that... But I was misinformed. I thought there was so many open there. According to two months ago, they had an engineer, they're gonna have an engineer go over there right away and look at the situation and no one went to the project. So you never went to the project.
Me personally? No, we sent, I, we sent someone from the office.
But they, they go to the local street and see the issue there.
They looked through the entire city, they did a street assessment. There were some rain events that happened that day. They saw some localized flooding. But in the realm of it, I, I tell you, all we can see is what's on top of the ground. We can't, I can't tell you where there's potting in an area, I can't tell you where it's coming from. Make assumptions by hills and...
Hey Jimmy, Tony did walk, go around with the engineer.
What's that? He did?
Yeah, Tony did go around with the engineer and show off the...
Well, and I'm also gonna, I had a conversation with one of the... Well, and I'm also going to throw in, I had a conversation with one of the lead engineers that was looking at this, and his comment was exactly what you're saying. One of the other things that needs to be done is that the people who live here need to be talked to so that we can get a good understanding. Because we know the technical things, but you guys might know, hey, it comes right behind that house. And sometimes those are clues that aren't readily available unless somebody tells you. And then that might lead to another discovery.
And that's what this study is about.
This is something that needs to be done. This is a, this is a take the city equipment out of there, turn the ditches, you have to again, but it's all...
They're supposed to look at, further look into it from underneath and see the evidence.
And then, in this contentious, I didn't talk about it, but at some point, if you want to move forward with any renovations or building to building or anything like that, I just put on there to select A, B, or C.
I'm going to throw in...
I should have put or, you know, or whatever. But right now, where you're at on your building renovations or any changes or anything like that, there are some meetings that need to happen. Someone needs to spearhead this and start moving it forward to find out what your needs are so that expenses to be evaluated. And that's a process.
Pre-design would really help you figure out those things of what you need versus what you want and help you evaluate the cost.
And my recommendation to that is, having worked in that exact thing before from the city side of it and on this side of it, once you start moving down that path and once you start doing it, that's a commitment, because you'll have costs. And you'll have, you'll, you know, the pre-planning takes some effort. So if you need a list of questions from us or anything like that, that we can help you to further decide how you want to eat this elephant one bite at a time, we'll do that, we'll explain anything. Happy to come have another meeting with you. Just want to, you know, just want to give you all the information that we can upfront. The last thing we'd ever want to do is vacuum on a path where you felt trapped into something, where you felt like, well, we have to move forward with this because we've got too much invested. We like to bring up uncomfortable conversation on the front side so that it doesn't happen later, so that you as council are informed.
So how much of your funding that you apply for depends on your status of your comprehensive plan?
How much of it depends on that? So a comprehensive plan, I have a hard time putting a weighted value on it, but I can tell you that in the realm of when you're applying for grants, they're all different from each other. But a comprehensive plan, it needs, it needs in your application status, when they talk about money that they're giving out, you know, and the number changes all the time. But I'm just going to throw in a number. For every dollar they have to give out, they get $12 worth of assets. So they're always looking for a reason, even though it sounds bad to say that, to take a project out of it. Well, one of them might be, well, the top five have comprehensive plans, so let's get rid of the rest of them. That might be, so it might not even be a monetary amount. It might just be a selection of, you know, criteria. But there's no requirement to have one for the...
Yeah, years ago, they put a premium on the currency of your comprehensive plan. So then they would have their engineer submit and redo the comprehensive plan. Costs to city another $25,000, $30,000. And I think ours is about 10 years old.
And a lot of times, your comprehensive plans just need a light update. They don't, they don't need to be redone. Or I shouldn't say redone, because you are technically redoing it. But it's just a review. We're so happy with this, this still makes sense.
We already took care of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the ERDC did our last one.
Okay.
Nothing much has changed or something to here.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we're all dealing at the pump, we grocery store and everything else, but you could have wrote something three years ago and it doesn't make sense today.
That's true.
And that's why it's scary to give people numbers. You know, like these numbers, that bar graph we have? I actually look at that, and the bar graphs makes more sense to me than the numbers because you want to know, you know, like which one of the percentage was concerned.
Were there any major structural issues at the arena?
At the arena? We didn't do any structural, you know, assessment to the room.
We visited it, but it wasn't the focus of what we were asked to do.
Right, okay.
Now, if you want a structural assessment...
Well, yeah, we're about to pour a bunch of money into it. There's some concerning things there, but I don't know how much that costs.
And I could give you an estimate on that, but it takes a structural engineer on site to do that. No one will put their stamp on it without putting the work in.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'll leave copies of this. If there's any further conversation or adjustments you want made to it or any guidance, otherwise, essentially, we'll sit idle until you tell us otherwise. Or if you'd like us to evaluate the cost, do anything else, we're happy to. This is how we work, it's a task order agreement. If you tell us to do something, we do it.
Thanks, John.
You won't be available. Thanks for having us, appreciate it.
And remember, they're just, they were just same central, like area option, and it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean...